Was deemed sufficiently qualified for the Public Works Director position, that overarching position that was created last year. And Edward was also interviewed for the position, so we had two. So we had two, two of the applicants who we felt were, that we wanted to interview. And the interviews were conducted by the mayor, the interim Public Works Director, John Curtis, also Mayor Protem and me. Following the interviews and in consultation with the KRW representative who attended the interviews, didn't participate, but listened in and advised us afterwards. The consensus was to terminate the recruitment for Public Works Director. And to consider Edward Sigward for the position of Water Waste Water Superintendent, which we'd like to retitle Water Facility Superintendent. So that includes our water treatment plant. And our wastewater treatment plant, which is now officially known as a Water Resource Reclamation Facility. And the idea is that you don't have wastewater, you focus on the water resources you have and making the best use of them. So so we did interview Edward for the, for that position, for the Water Facility Superintendent position. And then we also decided in consultation with KRW to consider Paul Crane, another longtime employee for the position of Public Works Superintendent. So both of these superintendent positions are already established in our adopted compensation plan. We update our compensation plan, our salary schedule every two years. And this is the second year of that two-year schedule. So we did create the Public Works Director position, but we still had on the books, these two superintendent positions and the salary ranges that have already been established for those. So the mayor, John Curtis and I met with Ed about serving in this Water Facility Superintendent role instead of the Public Works Director role. And Ed has worked for the city for almost thirteen years. Currently is the maintenance supervisor for the water and wastewater facilities. So he has all the required certificates and licenses to operate the facilities and recently obtained certification from the state as operator in responsible charge, ORC. So after we met with Ed and kind of closed that process, we then turned our attention to the Public Works Superintendent position. And we met with Paul Crane. And about serving in the role of Public Works Superintendent, which would include, which does include streets, water distribution, sewer collection, the reservoir. And parks and buildings. Paul, again, is a longtime employee here. He's worked for the city for nearly seventeen years. And is a senior lead public works maintenance worker. He also has all the required certificates and licenses for water distribution and water and sewer collection. And has long been certified in those areas as an ORC for our system. So under former Public Works Director John Bordoni's supervision, and most recently under interim Public Works Director John Curtis' mentorship. Ed and Paul have demonstrated that they both are ready to assume a higher level of responsibility and leadership in the positions of superintendent. Guidance into just showing that they're willing to take on more responsibility, and I think they're ready to take on these superintendent roles. So therefore, the mayor, John Curtis, and I are recommending that Ed be promoted to the position of Water Facility Superintendent. And that Paul be promoted to the position of Public Works Superintendent. Both would change from not exempt to exempt. So they're now overtime eligible, but in these managerial roles, they would be exempt positions. They would each have a salary of ninety-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which is the minimum of the approved salary range under the city's compensation plan. So that would get them up to the base of those salary ranges for superintendent positions. These promotions are on the agenda today under my report as an action item for consideration of approval at the regular meeting. It is also recommended that John Curtis continue to work part-time as a consultant to help Ed and Paul with the transition to these new positions. Modest changes to the existing superintendent job descriptions are included in the packet. I left the track changes in there, so you could see those changes. They're already on the books, but we needed to update them a little bit, and I've worked with John Curtis on that. Again, the revised job descriptions are on the agenda for consideration of adoption by resolution in the regular meeting. To assist Ed and Paul with the success in their new positions, John Curtis and I are recommending that they both attend the twenty twenty-four Annual Rocky Mountain Public Works Institute in Littleton. Brochures included in the pack, in the packet there. The institute just quote, provides a regional program that educates and elevates public works employees, helping them achieve their management and leadership potential. Through interactive classes taught by experienced public works officials. So if you're going to go to, from what I understand from John Curtis, if you're going to go to leadership training in the region that's accessible. This is the place to go if you want to get your managerial training in the public works field and water wastewater field. Two-day sessions are held every other month, starting in January twenty twenty-four, with the final session in the fall of twenty-four. Tuition is eighteen hundred dollars each and includes a registration fee to the annual Colorado Chapter Conference of the American Public Works Association. So if these changes are approved by council this evening, our next step would be to ask each of them to apply. You have to apply to the institute. And get, hopefully get accepted in those, that class next year. And that's my report.
Thanks, Andy. Just want to give one bit of backstory. This was, KRW is the same hiring outfit. And that didn't mention any words. It is extraordinarily difficult to find people in this position. So we're just, I'm saying as a city, we are fortunate that we happen to have to, that we could bring up. Because you know, it just doesn't even work trying to steal them or pay more from another entity. It's just extraordinarily difficult. We're just not producing. We're, we're wish he was here as well. And I'm not sure if he was going to be here for the regular council meeting.
Yeah, he'll probably be at the regular council.
So any questions for Andy?
I don't have any questions, but I have to compliment everyone on their insight. To see that we've had applicants or employees here that well, well suited to the position. So often because of the, sometimes it passed by because they haven't been recognized. But somebody's been in a position for a long time. So I think, I think that was very intuitive and I compliment all people involved in that decision.
Thanks, Art. Great. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got Congress and Ed and Paul, they can do the job and they'll do it well.
Well, particularly from you, I, I really appreciate that and you would know. Congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
All right, well, that was it for five thirty.
It is. Yep. And we have our joint work session coming up at six o'clock with the Fair Creek Metropolitan Recreation District. Our thought was that you all would stay at the thais and then that the the board members from Recreation District would be at these tables and staff would be at the seats there. And this is a really designed to be a conversation between the city council and the Recreation District Board to consider the master plan that Kevin Shanks from THK will be presenting. And then to have some discussion about the vision and the desires for the future of the ball fields, maybe recreation in general in either of those places.
Right. Well, sounds real good. Why don't we take a ten-minute break and we'll, we can be at six.
So what we need is to be younger guys that need jobs. And gals. But that's the problem is there's nobody in there to watch you do this.
Right.
Andy and Jonathan, they're so swamped.
I mean, I mean, if there's any help, but it's, it is one of the things I want to, you know, we can't do anything. It's a small town, but that's why I think trade schools should be free is at least get people in the door. You know, I mean, I don't know. And it could be a good paying job. I mean, that's not a terrible salary. Yeah, I mean, I wish there was something like a, I don't know. Warren Tech, does Warren Tech deal with um, trade? Um, maybe, maybe we need to go down there and just like get our name in the, you know, like, would you ever want to live in the mountains near scary area, your boating area?
We're open to that. We, we go down and work with our first line.
Warren Tech's amazing.
I just hired a kid just in graduate high school this year. And went back to the mid-group position.
I mean, if we can get him and be like, hey, this is not like, we just want you for summer cleanup. We want, we want you to grow with the city. You know what I mean? And here's what we can, yeah.
And Paul's already short one guy, but I think.
No, we're going to be short those guys. Well, Paul, we gotta fill their positions, right? I mean.
Right, but he already is short one guy, can't get anybody. So yeah, he's gonna try to get the same problem. County, 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 same problem. Yeah.
You can do, you know, trash qualified employees.
Yeah. Most of the guys are on sixty in public works.
Yeah.
Most of them, maybe two or.
Still. I mean.
Bob's sixty-six and a half.
What are guys twenty to forty-five doing? Like, do they not, where are they working, John?
I don't know.
Seriously.
I honestly don't know.
I agree with you.
That was eleven. I love it. How you get by without working.
I don't have anything I can fix it quickly. I, I don't really have anything I can do to fix it quickly, but as soon as this upgrades, I can get it up there. So if it's not quite ready yet, we could try to like talk a little bit and then I don't know what the best opportunity or alternative is. Yeah, we.
We don't zoom to further.
Yeah, the only reason I like that, that people can zoom is there are a lot of people that want to make comments, not that they ever do. Really?
Which is good.
He should be able to tell.
Yeah, but I think, I think it's a good thing.
No.
I don't think it's a.
I think it's a great thing that they just come and do it.
Like shell every time something fails. Opportunity to sit there and watch a meeting.
Not only that, but you know what? I think why we don't hear as many comments.
Just people are aware of what's going on.
Yeah.
Because they hear it firsthand.
And even if only five or six people are watching it and they're the ones that go to the coffee shop.
But they talk to their.
They talk to their friends. But I think it's the shock. I mean, it even happens to me when I was off council. I didn't hear anything about that. But um, no, but I think that is actually probably helping keeping that, that that burden on people, that shock factor down. Yeah. I, I, this whole work thing though, it kind of boggles my mind. I mean, these are good paying jobs. The job that at eighteen years old, you could come in, I don't know, maybe thirty, I don't even, maybe probably not even that, but.
Is that what it said?
I have to say that I was, I was a bartender, so.
Okay, yeah.
And that, and but I did that for a long time. And then, you know, you have to tell there's less much money you can make and that. Probably more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Early on.
I was in Colorado, my first apartment was a hundred dollars for the first month and like two hundred dollars every month after that. So it was like, yeah. No, but I, I don't understand the idea that, that they're just not working. It's not like we've lost people.
Yeah, I don't understand the difference. It's the same thing.
I mean, you get kids, right? What are they, what are those guys doing? CNA?
Nursing assistant.
Oh, very cool. Did you, where does she go to school here?
Yeah.
Colorado. My friend Jess, the library, her daughter was staying at the state for the same night. And she's like, why, why are you doing this? It's going to be so much more money for us. Okay. Wow, we just be young to have twenty-year-old.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, that's pretty young to have a.
Yeah.
That was our, that's our age.
Yeah, I thought if I had an HDMI cable, I could run it to the TV and just. I thought we had something around here.
I get it.
Yeah, I was sick. When was that last Wednesday? The Wednesday before?
Yeah.
Yeah, I brought toys, so. Are you signing on?
Nothing.
Yeah.
This is another day. Good meeting. It's, it's always good meetings. Yeah, I figured you were sick.
Yeah.
Which, it's going around. Kelly got sick and Maria got really sick. Actually, Maria got COVID, so she can stick eight, nine days. They're having a really hard time. Yeah, it's, there's other stuff going around and stuff makes people miserable.
No, no, my daughter had it. Took her, well, three weeks to get over it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's like.
I've been lucky this year. Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Lifesaver, buddy, lifesaver. I guess broke one of her trucks. He got it in, got tired, got the repairs on earlier.
So I'm on this committee.
How's that going? Hopefully, is there RP going out yet? Huh? Is the RFP out?
No, I mean. Why are they looking far three? Why aren't you looking? Yeah, just far three. They're not really focusing anything on EMS. In your structure, you're. Going with county laws for title. I'm pretty sure. Yeah, they need to think about bringing that in. Oh, I'm getting this. Oh, no, we don't have to worry about it.
Because I want to use it to go for a ballot initiative. And I wouldn't use it to make it better. Right? I think it should be a, probably a chance to improve. But I did that for a living, so I guess it's probably.
And that's why I told him. I told Mike Anderson. We don't want. My doctor.
I'm excited to get it done. I'm excited to keep moving forward and make progress. I don't want to stop. I want to stop progress. You know that. And do the right thing all the time.
Municipalities are pretty against the county.
Put in one on each side. And I think historically, it always does. And that's not fair to the nation. You represent the big, the bulk of the people. That's in my heart. Don't get over that. That's one of the reasons I wanted to.
Wait, that wasn't the attendance.
No, I guess.
What were you thinking?
Hello?
Is this okay with you if I leave it like this?
So is Kevin going to be here?
He's going to be here. Yeah, that'll work. And then John, you'll be there. How you doing? I submit change to one meeting and saw you present, so. We need, we got. Everything was going to break in one second.
How am I saying this?
Today, John. For your goods, okay. Hello, everybody. I would like to welcome every lunch in April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. City Council and Pacific Metropolitan Recreation District Joint Work Session. And we'll get rolling here at six oh six. And Paul, if you wanted to call yours.
Yes.
Order as well.
People protocols. So I would like to call the order, the board of directors special meeting. Today, the work session with Idaho Springs. It's, as you said, Mayor, April twenty-fourth. Till after six o'clock. And we have present a forum. There's four of us here. Amy Saxon, Maggie Vickers.
Well, great to have everybody. And we fortunately just have one thing on the agenda, but it's a pretty major, and that is the Sports and Recreation Complex Master Plan. And who would like to kick this off?
John's going to start off with a staff report and then we'll go right into the presentation with HK.
All right, sounds good.
So Mayor and Council and Rec Board, we have been working for several years now on determining a location for a new skate park in Idaho Springs. In the last ten years, there have been a number of really
Connection that we've had um to the west with the tunnel underneath um I seventy. And one of the things that came out of this and many other projects has been what can we do? To improve that tunnel connection because it is a little bit scary, it's dark. Um, there's not a lot of real good eyes on it. And I I know a lot of parents are fairly uncomfortable allowing their kids to go that way. So um, there needs to be an ongoing conversation about that connection. The other thing that's that's at issue there on the west side of the of the facility is private property. And so there is traffic that literally runs right on the backside of those ball fields, okay? In the same places that uh, a lot of folks that are using the rec complex or want. So and it is definitely a conflict area, so. This was one of the things we were charged to look at and talk about in the master plan. And then I guess I'll mention on um. When the field on the west there, there's a drainage problem, pretty significant drainage problem, okay? Um, the water um runs off that infield, it kind of floods at home plate. And carries dirt and crud across the little plaza and just makes a big mess in there, okay? Now, while the master plan didn't go into detail on and create construction details on how to fix it. We did include uh, the idea, you know, the cost for fixing that. And when we get to the master plan, we'll talk about the ideas for that. So before I jump forward, are there, oh. Are there other things, Andy or Jonathan, that I should say about what we were kind of charged with to start this?
The other thing I'd say is one of our charges was to look at. Multiple uses for this area. If we're gonna do away with a ball field, we wanted to see that ball field transformed into. Uh, being attractive to all different ages, abilities, and also improve the parking, so. And as we're trying to maximize uses there, but it is a very constrained space and trying to do the best we can.
Right. Okay, let's go ahead and jump to the next slide, okay? Um, these are just a few of the comments, these are sort of common ones. Um, you know, CCMRD did a bunch of additional input. This catches a lot of what they, some of the high level kind of things, and I'm sure Cameron can. Kind of give an overview of what they feel like came out of that, but these are some of the key things. That uh, we heard not only in the public engagement that THK was actually involved in, but what we also heard through all forms of engagement. This isn't by no means all the comments, but I just wanna read these fairly quickly. There was a real desire for concessions and restroom structure with a covered element to it for shade or getting out of the rain or snow. Um, pedestrian scale lighting is preferred. Right now, what we have is that giant high mass lighting. Which is great to light the place up, but it's not particularly uh. It's not particularly uh friendly in some ways, um. Wanted to maximize the flexibility of the parking lot, so what does that mean? Uh. For festivals and things that might happen, we oftentimes. There's a need for more than one stage, okay? So having that parking lot so you could set up a stage. Or food trucks or whatever was part of the conversation. Um, better connection to the Greenway Trail and pedestrian tunnel, I kind of talked about that one as a need. Um. Then there was a comment about, it was interesting, this was kind of. Part of the fun, part of this sort of exercise with with the stakeholders is that. Everybody brought their bias, right? If you were a skateboarder, they would ask, why didn't you tennis court pickleball? Of course, all we want to do is skateboard. Uh, and then the pickle, the pickleball players are going, I don't know why we need a skate. So we heard a lot, so there's competing interests, okay? And so the only reason I put this question up here was just so people not to pick on pickleball. Or the skateboarders, just to point out that there was depending on. What set of glasses you had, and I should point out, the other one was a lot of adults that do things there. Were concerned about having a playground for their kids, right? Because right now, there is this feeling if we're there for baseball, if we're first there for soccer, my other kids aren't playing. Um, there's nothing for them to do, so there was a big playground contingency too, so um, anyway. Some of the interesting things as it relates to the skate park, um, they also kind of thought a covered element within the skate park would make some sense. Um. We'll talk about some of the features that they brought up and we have some examples. I'll tell you that we did not design the skate, the skate park, and there's a reason for that. Um, we identified the square footage, which I'll talk about in a minute here, um. But the recommendation is to basically hire a skateboard park designer. And potentially do it as as a design build project, because oftentimes that's the best way to get skate parks constructed. So we basically sort of worked about, worked around trying to figure out where the best place for the skate park was. And give it the square footage and make sure it was contiguous enough that it could be um, a high quality skate park. Um. There was a desire for, again, I, for this, you heard Andy mentioned things for all ages. So the idea of a pump track was 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 on here and. Was included and we'll talk about what a pump track is versus a mountain bike skills course. And you know, I just had this conversation last week, um, and so we'll talk about that. Um, Olympic style skate parks for inspiration, look at those. And I I'll talk about that, we we had some really great input from the skateboard, it was really. Um, a fun meeting that I intended attended um, here with them. And they opened my eyes to some things that are important in skate, skate parks, so we can talk about that a little bit. Um, some of the things that are kind of still out there, um, and it was questioned during the process was. Did the skate park and pump track be related to one another or not? Um, and then also certain things about how you create a skate park were also brought up. Um. Kind of the idea of organic forms versus some of the rigid things, and I'll show that in some of the pictures of other skate parks. And a lot of the skateboard folks pointed out some good examples, so we'll look at those in a minute, okay? And I'm sure I didn't catch all the comments, but. Cameron, I'm gonna look to you, is there anything else that, I'm just trying to give a quick overview, but is there any other big comments that came out of the public? You think we should tag on to this?
I think your overview is excellent, um, and there's obviously a lot more.
Yeah. Okay, so let's jump to the, and I should say, so let's jump to the next step. So I should say, you'll see in the master plan report, we put. All the different alternatives that the group worked through, just because sometimes. And I'm looking at you, Amy, because you and I work together on a lot of stuff, sometimes it's really good to show where we've been. So someone goes, did you look at it this way? We can say, well, yeah, we sure did, so. Um, we looked at it about four or five different ways, and then on the final one, we even ever was that was evolved that one a bit, so. Here is, um. Can you, I guess I won't ask you if you can see it, this is our, this is our option. If you have your master plan with your stuff, it's right in the middle, um, yeah, maybe we can do that, that's too big. Sorry. You're doing great. Uh, sorry. So maybe what we'll do is just start on the east end. And maybe, maybe what we want to do is um. Kind of talk about the access, may, you know what, now that I had you zoom in, zoom out, I'm gonna wanna talk about the overall access numbers, sorry. I'm messing with you, Jonathan. Um, let's talk about the overall access a bit here first, okay? Um, we want to control um, kind of the access a little bit more. Um, on this facility, as well as the parking, so, can't remember the exact number of parking spaces.
Sixty-eight, oh, this is showing seventy.
Seventy, yeah, so we took, as I said, on the east end, we've taken out all of. The um, that storage lot and added in about seventy spaces in here. Um, which is quite a few more cars than what you could park there today randomly, okay? Now that's seventy spaces, since this is a master plan, we went ahead and assumed. That we were closing off the Forest Service's main access point, just FYI. We would probably lose four spaces or so, maybe five if we have to maintain that access. And so the idea is that if you drive to this facility, you are only gonna have access with your car to that parking. Okay, um. At the bend up there where the kind of the star is, we're actually talking about some sort of access control or gate, okay? Um, that would allow the folks that have the private property to to the west to access, access it. As well as, you know, with deliveries to the concession stand, the food trucks set up at the stage. Um. The detail of how that access control, what it physically is, whether it's a gate, probably not bollards, a lot of us don't like bollards. Uh, but it's something to control access there. And what we were able to do is separate even the roadway from. It's more of a pedestrian linkage along there, that that writ right there, there's a pedestrian linkage and the roadway there. Um, with that linkage down to uh, the center plaza area. And then also it gets you to the bleachers on uh, the first baseline. Okay, but there's really, um, and then it is still um, shared. Walking through the private property, um, because uh. There just at this point in time isn't any way to separate that, but it's gotta be something that's taken care of in the future, okay? Um, the basic circulation is, so if you are driving in. And you were gonna set up the stage or go to the concession stand to make a delivery or clean the restrooms or whatever, you come in like he. Was just doing with the cursor, and then you drive down this to access the stage. Um, as well as the uh, maintenance shed down here or the concession stand, he just. Um, pointed to them, so we have, we have illustratives of all of this, so let's see, you can see how this stuff works. Um. We looked at, so that's kind of the big pic, and then there's also a a an exit drive if you were driving through. Out that way, so the trucks or vehicles that come in. The service activities or events would make a loop through, they wouldn't have to back up or. Turn around or do anything, they can keep going in single direction through the park or the facility, okay, so. At the northeast corner is where, after studying the skate park in a number of different locations. The skate park ended up at the northeast corner, and the thought behind that was, there's a couple of reasons for that. That's probably the portion of the park that sees the most sunshine, particularly in the winter time, okay? And so um, skateboarders, if it's not full of snow, will use it year round, okay? Um, and you know, just to kind of, so there's a real positive thing that happens. If we can sort of energize this place. More days of the year, and so um, having that skate park up there in the north corner, northeast corner made some sense. Kind of the thing that looks like a giant snake or worm on the west end is a pump track. Um, whether it's here, whether it's somewhere else, that's still up for conversation, but. That whole area up there, the skate park in this configuration is about thirteen thousand square feet. And ideally, we were hearing people wanted about twelve to fifteen thousand square feet. So the pump track cuts into that just a little bit, okay? Um, just to the south of that area, well. I'll go to, I'll go to the, I'll go to the tennis courts, you're fine. So as a part of when we did Colorado Boulevard, we took out the tennis court. And um, I won't go into all legalities of it. But because of how that was funded originally, Idaho Springs is kind of on the hook to replace it. And so we know that, you know, having done, having been involved in recreation business for years, I can tell you. Things that are hot in recreation come and go, right, okay? Tennis was a much bigger deal a number of years ago than it is today, okay? But there still are tennis players. So the idea was, well, we could build a tennis court and also incorporate for pickleball because uh, courts, which is also a big deal today. People love to play pickleball, all ages, okay? And so um, um, this court is designed, would be designed so that it could accommodate. Both of those things, and then there's an idea too that if um, uh, if, if. If there was a desire to do this, you could also incorporate the basketball court with that as well. Again, now you have reuses that conflict with each other, so. Um, at this point, the master plan's showing a basketball court because there's interest in it, that's on the south. Maybe you wanna point to it, sorry, right there, um, half court, and then in between. Um, is the concession and restroom, okay, um. We are doing so, we we have costed into the cost estimate, utility extensions for that. Because ultimately, the desire is to have running water in that. Um, maybe have flushing toilets if we could figure out, but there's issues with getting utilities across the interstate. We do have a water line, can't remember, I think it's only two inch water line, okay, um. And so the water is probably doable, and there is no sewer line across there at this point. But we did make some accommodations for those you, so some of the costs that you see in your packet, that is included. Not the utility extension across the roadway, but some utility work onsite, okay? Now, at this concession facility, I'll show you some pictures of what this might look like. Um, because it's covered, it's concession, uh, we're we're kind of thought that it'd be nice. You don't have a bit of a gathering space there, so there's a fire pit um, there. Um, probably a good place for some built-in benches and some other things, okay? So just to the east of that is a lawn area, okay? And that's a multi-use lawn area, it could be used for soccer field, um, not a full-size one, a smaller one. And then remember I had talked about, you potentially, if you could look out in the parking lot. Or potentially could be a stage sat up there, so during a festival or event, you could have a second stage in that. That lawn area could be a great lawn for that festival. South of that ball, of that grass area is the playground. And had a lot of input on the playground, we're gonna show you some pictures and some ideas that are in the master plan for how that could happen. Okay, um, I might just as well go onto the south, the snaky thing going up the hillside. Is there is an opportunity to kind of do an oval, right? And you know, climb up the hill and look back over the facility, and so um, that's been proposed in here. Okay, so we moved, now let's go to the 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 main baseball field here. On the very south end of the baseball field, we're moving the batting cage to this location, okay? Um, and I told you where the stage was up here, okay? Um, but then basically the field is staying in its existing location. But not its existing condition. Um, you notice now there's a skinned infield, okay? Part of the issue with the the, with the entire skinned infield is that. It gets compacted, and when it rains, the water just hits it and runs off, that's part of the problem, so. Part of the solution is to actually come back in and create pervious surface in the form of a turf infield. Which in some ways is actually safer uh, for kids and adults, it slows, it slows the ground balls down a little bit, okay? I gotta just do a sidebar, because I I I used to coach. Um, my uh, my, my uh, junior high kids' baseball team. And we had a situation where um, I had an infielder just standing. Outside the skinned area and the lip that occurs, the ball came out, crossed the skinned infield. Lost no velocity, hit that lip, ball jumped up and hit the kid right in the mouth and knocked up a teeth. And so, I I, you know, there's, there's some things that uh. And the interesting thing is they took him to the hospital, actually put the teeth back in and was fine, but anyway. There's just some, there's some things that we can do with it, with the baseball field. And we included the cost of that kind of upgrade and some drains in behind home plate and around the fence also to deal with that. Um. What else? I'm gonna show you some images now, is there anything else from the plan view that I missed?
Still have a full-size soccer field on the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I did, yeah, it's drawn on there, there's a full-size soccer field on on that infield. And of course, that could be divided up into smaller fields too, if you, if it was on a weekend and you were having. Um, smaller kids play, you could easily have three fields going here, um, anyway, thanks. We jump to the next one. Okay, so this is just a picture looking south of what a fire pit might look like, you can see that. The playground in the background and the basketball court in the background. And the tree slope behind. Okay, so this is looking east over the top of the field to remain. And the batting cages on the right, you see where we've relocated the stage in the middle, um. You can see food trucks, the courts lined up is large enough that you could have a whole series of food trucks in there and still be able to get. Pedestrians through there pretty easily. Um, the stage is kind of blocking the concession stand, and the big white spot in the back right there, that's. That's where the, that's where the skate park, okay? Go ahead. So again, this is looking the other direction at the ball field with the grassed in infield. Um, showing the uh, kind of the amount of space you'd have with food trucks. In here that really maintaining this central plaza, I think, really is a huge flex space. There could be a lot of things that could happen in here, I mean. I know you have your farmer's market somewhere else, but you could have a craft show, you could have all kinds of things happen in here by virtue of. Kind of creating this one-way plaza for traffic through uh, to get through here, there's enough room to do it. You can't really see it, but it passed that last food truck. Right in there is where the concession building is, kind of behind the stage back there. And the tennis courts and pickleball courts on the left. Okay. Okay, so now we're clear out on the east end, looking across the uh, future skate park. With the pump track in the background, the grass area, the parking lot, um, and then with the stage and everything in the background. Okay. So now, what are these pictures in here for? So let's talk about these, and I got an education. On. What the skateboarders felt was a great example is in state, okay? And the one that I seem to have, that they bent my ear over was the Arvada Skate Park. Which is the one that's, which is the three pictures that kind of have the dash lines around them. And so why is that, why is the skate park so popular? Part of it is that giant bulb-shaped thing, light bulb thing on the, on the left end there, that's a super deep pool, okay? Now, I'm not a skateboarder, okay, but um, they tell me that this is a pretty unique feature. And um, the other thing is too, is that they like the fluidity of this. Remember I made the comment they don't like rigid kind of things? The reality of that fluidity that you can kind of see with the winding um, sort of features. Um, is a real positive thing, again, what we want to try to do. In in the master plan was just capture the ideas. In my mind, you know, the city, CCMRD and the skateboard will actually work with the skateboard designers. But I think it's important to just capture what's good, right? And so we know kind of where we're heading, right? Not that we're gonna build the Arvada Skate Park again, but some of these features are good examples of what skateboarders would like. And this is like. You know, compared to the past skate park, this is like a thousand times more impressive and more fun. Than what was here before, so I think part of people's patience is recognizing that they know they are gonna. That everybody's working on trying to get something that's even better than that. Um, there's some other examples of skate parks in here, not quite as popular, you wanna jump to the next slide? Okay, so the other one is Silverthorne, and I'm a little bit less familiar with that one. And I'm kind of looking at Cameron on that, I can't remember exactly what they, I think that it was some of the construction of this because it was at high altitude. There's real issues with copings and freeze thaw if they're not done right. And so one of the things that has come out for me is that at the time. That the city and CCMRD hire a skateboard park designer, they'll wanna hire one. That's actually had experience building skate parks at elevation, okay? Um, that was the other sort of big fact, fact that was hammered into our head, and and um. Then there's just some examples of some other skate parks on here, go ahead. So now what's a, what's a pump track? A pump track is actually for younger kids, okay, so uh, it gives younger kids a place to to ride their bike. And the idea is here is that it would actually be paved, okay? And so there's some good examples of paved pump tracks um, around uh, the. The Denver metro area, um, and these are all good examples, um, they're basically asphalt. Over berms and other types of things um, that make it fun for kids on BMX bikes or whatever to kind of ride. On this, and it's, it's a fairly low maintenance kind of thing, as opposed to, remember I said, what's the difference between a pump track? And a mountain bike skills course, okay? With Virginia Canyon open space, okay, with the mountain bikes up there. What people would expect with that would be more of a mountain bike skills course, and you could build that. For any level of a uh, of biker, beginner. And it, me, an intermediate one or or an expert. And what a mountain bike skills course is, is a little bit different than a pump. It is actually something where people can practice their mountain biking skills, and so they're always soft service, okay? And I can tell you those types of facilities take their amount of maintenance because they get beat down pretty good. So it was never an idea to put a mountain bike skills course on the park, it's always been more of this pump track. I just wanna make sure we're kind of clear on that. Go ahead. Okay, um. Here is just some images of different types of concession buildings with some with more of an overhang, some with less. You can see the one down here in the right, it literally is large enough that it's, it's basically a shelter. So you've got picnic tables and stuff underneath there, you have plenty of room. Um, to kind of look at that whole sort of concession restroom shade. Structure thing as almost a project in itself, to kind of figure out what that really needs to be, okay? Um, the city, as you know, has had some experience with that. There's a pretty nice restroom that was put in as a part of Colorado Boulevard down here. Um, and for those of you that don't know, that was, that was a package structure, it, um, that was. I won't say it's off the shelf, but it sort of was. They they have an off-the-shelf thing that you can kind of modify and select certain things. Um, and then like finishes and some of the square footages. And so we were anticipating it was something similar to that structure down. Think that's it, oh, no, playground, how could I forget the playground? Okay, so we talked a lot about playgrounds, okay? Um, and none of this equity and inclusion thing um, comes into play here a little bit. This is, this is actually an easy way to do it and have a lot of fun, okay? So there's examples of sensory things, right? Touch on the left, the green thing, um. Chimes on the one in the middle. Um. The talk tubes there at the, uh, on the upper right. Then, um, one of the things that we have been doing, we've designed a couple of these and some others regional parks around the front range. Is bouldering and creating little climbing walls within the playground. Are just hugely a draw for kids. Okay? And so, um, that's why we have pictures and examples of some of those that are around. Um, because that did come up as a part of this conversation. Um, as well as we're just seeing it as recreation designers as kind of, it's kind of like the pickleball thing. This is kind of a big thing for kids. Okay, right now. Um, okay. And that pretty much is, um, kind of an overview of the master. So, uh, we can open it up for questions and conversation. But that can be a recommendation and I appreciate this opportunity. To share this with you. I'm very excited about this. This will be a cool facility. Um. You know, I think there's some things about hours of operation. I spent some time talking with your police chief about this the last time we were up here. And there's some interesting things that are going on with that and. Um, not sure what the recommendation is, but a couple of the skateboard folks and one of the designers that attended pointed out that in Montana. Um, they've actually started going to leaving their skateboard parks open 24/7. And the reason being is they were actually seeing. Less vandalism and malfeasance. Uh, because there were eyes in the park 24/7. Cause one of the things, uh, that does happen is that. Um, skateboarders will pretty much skateboard 24/7 versus what's happening in Denver. Where they have their park requirements that I think everything gets shut down at 10 o'clock. Lights go out. And they are, they have a lot of problems with their skate parks in Denver. So. That's not been solved. I only point this out as something that. You guys will all want to kind of think about. If you choose to do the 24/7, you probably will be the first in the front range to do that. So anyway.
And I, I have just two questions.
Sure.
Is there, uh, because we're in an open space county, if you will, 70% of it is, is a. Forest, you know, we have trees everywhere. Um, do you have to have a certain amount of trees on the property? Or there's no requirement? So. Just my suggestion, and I'm looking at you guys, we're such neighbors. What if you took out a few of those trees, maybe intersperse them with paintings, but have a canopy? That you have shade, you know, with natural shade and then. And that way you could get more seating area possibly in the park. And then my other comment was, does the pump track have to be paved? I've been around, you know, the state a little bit and I've seen a few of them and I, I've never seen one paved actually.
They don't have to be paved, but from a sustainability standpoint, paving them holds up way better than. Then, then a gravel one. And no, actually most pump tracks now that are being constructed are most all over going and paved. So there's, if you, if you look in the master plan I gave, there, there's a bunch of pictures with the names. Those are all fairly recent pump tracks that were built in the last year.
I was just curious because you were talking about that with your skateboard park, you know, that, that he pulled. You know, that could actually cause asphalt to crack. I think we have that problem. There, there's.
Right, uh, but, um, you know, in this day and age, there are, you know, different asphalt mixes and things you can do. That, um, can alleviate that problem a bit. So.
Pump track won't be getting quite that heavy traffic that our roadways get.
That's true.
Unless they get a traffic.
No, no overloaded semis, right?
Right.
Thank you. Those are good comments.
Right, uh, I got one, one, I guess concerned, that looks awesome. Um, the issue with the Forest Service, I think. Six eleven is in that building right there. And the Forest Service, um, don't figure out. Referred that building to house that engine. With a lot of energy. And essentially by. Ending their entrance is fine for the rest of the facility, but. Can't take away. Their ability to back in and out of that.
And we did not. That, that we.
Well, the design is for that building system that can open.
Yeah, you want to go back to that.
Continue to use that building on.
Yeah, we actually created better access to that building.
That's the only idea that.
No, that's a good point though. I didn't, I didn't elaborate on that.
Yeah, that's for the six eleven, um. That's for the town. And they've also got a couple of vehicles that go there when they, and. But when, when you don't compromise their ability to operate. I don't know.
Well, Jonathan's able to get it pulled back up. Um. I can show you what, what we did with that. We did leave access to that and actually. Made it even more direct and we'll have, be able to pull out under the asphalt.
The gear, I mean, she's her exit, he's been gay. No.
And no.
They re-group the building to where you are back in.
That's where the wood.
I know they don't have, there's no money in their budget.
Yeah, it's actually, um. It's only the other access that we discussed, not even the, the one that that building we, we left and we put a, we put a landscape island in there also so that. Um, right now a car could come in and swing left really quick and hit somebody coming out of that drive and we actually have a landscape island in there now. Drive coming out. So I would argue that we made it a little bit better than what this.
Yeah, I'm having every possible problem this evening. Sorry.
You're doing fine, Jonathan. The fact you got us up at all is amazing. I mean. There's some interesting movies out there. I can show you that. If you don't get it.
Video here, that was my only question.
No, that was a good one because I didn't bring it up. Well, thank you for asking.
Um, you had a question? Um, maybe just a process question, shape one. In the interest of time. Um, we are very familiar with what was presented. We met. Looked it over and we liked it too a lot. Um, but in the interest of, um, getting our thoughts out in the air. Uh, would it be prudent to have Cameron, are you, would you be willing to make the lead on our comments? Or would you? Would you like me to do that?
I think you should just go for it.
Well, Cameron is our subject matter expert because she's been reading and reading this. So I, if, if you'll give me the liberty later to take a few minutes and highlight for you guys. With, you know, we're looking at it strictly from a recreation and the relationship we have with you on the. I, I would love for us to come up with a great name for that park. The Ball Field Park or whatever it is, you gotta come up with something. Really cool, right?
It's always something.
Maybe we did.
Bear Harmon.
The mayor. We may have that further discussed. Kate probably. Um, but we, uh. So we'll throw this through our ideas out there. And that is on this sheet here. I don't know if you guys. Have it, how does it, how does it, it's in there, page 23. And so, um, I will take a stab at this. Uh, for us. Obviously, the skate park is priority one for us. Oh, and I didn't say. Cam, Cameron's got this report. The community support has been going on as Kevin mentioned for a long time. And that's all of the. Yeah, the community support. So we have tons of data for that. But specifically to the proposal, we like it. Um, with these comments, we would like to, uh, move, I know in funding is a big deal. We would like to move. The skate park into phase one. We would like to move the skate park in at least somehow or another having a shovel in the dirt. At some point in phase one where we're all working on funding, but we let the community know. County know, our, our constituency, our, is a county. And letting everybody know that we have included the skate park in phase one and we're moving forward with design and so on and so forth. Um, that is our number one. Ask. Secondly, um, to Kevin's point about the multi-court. He makes a good point. That you can't be playing pickleball and tennis and shooting basketball all at the same time, but saying you're going to put it on one court. But that's what we proposed and they don't necessarily have to be on the same, but maybe adjacent, maybe there's an equivalent scale in. Making the basketball court tied in with those and the pickle, and at least one or two of the pickleball courts. Like what up at Elm Green and a lot of places, they put pickleball courts on tennis courts. So there would have to be some kind of reservation deal. But right now pickleball's so hot, three or four courts, we get a tournaments or whatever and that type of deal. So we're proposing they deconsolidate it into one court or one court, every one hardcore area.
Tom, did you have a lot of people request? I'm not biased by any means, by the way, and a lot of people requesting tennis?
Nobody's requesting tennis. It came down to the GO code because of the money I used to, we took Audi tennis court.
Uh. Yeah. So can we just say that we have a tennis court and just have four pickleball and a basketball court?
And, and there was, there could be some scheduling where the tennis people, because as you say, there are, it, it didn't go away. You know, there's still the US Open and all that, but we could have gender reserved times. Pickleball is just writing down so much there.
I was in Florida and nobody's playing tennis. You know, that was the hotbed of tennis.
To fulfill this promise.
I know, I get you. I'm just saying.
We want to do a vague switch, but. And so efficiency in the courts with priority on pickleball now with the ability to be multi-passing. On there is, is, is we highlighted that. Um, let me see the next one. We, I'll just be very blunt about getting straight to this stuff. Oh. The next one is the use of the soccer fields. It's not all the time and, and I see that, we see that the field that you, what Cameron had said in here. Was that the big field be replicated from where it is now on the Shelby Field. Over to the Quinn Field, if I've not got that backwards, that it be replicated. The one that you got drawn on the new field is 70 by 40. The question is, is that the same size as was on the other field? And it's smaller. We would, we would love to be able to replicate that. Soccer is a big deal. It gets a lot of use. We have leagues and there's hundreds of, a couple of hundred people over there on Saturday mornings. But we would love to, and, and this leads segues into the next point. And the next point is. We have made a comment something to the effect of, we don't see a need for a pump track. We would rather. Prioritize either the skate park and or green space with not having a pump. Not to negate what you said about the popularity of it, but that's not what we've heard. We, we've not heard anything about a pump.
Hoping that can, that can be with, uh. Examples that you put up there on the master plan. The 40,000 square foot. Park and a 14,000 square foot park. Uh, which. We would be scaled down to your. Some square foot, foot trackers, I mean. On, on the test plane.
It is. It's about, yes, it's not super huge.
It's, it's fine. And, and, and you had mentioned that, uh, what they are for is, I think both. When you're talking about 40,000 square foot contracts. Certainly that's for all use. That's a, that's an impressive park to have a lot of fun on. 2,000 square foot pump track is, uh, kind of a space here.
What if, what if you, uh, could you increase your sidewalk side? Obviously they're going to be ADA to have like a little. B bike lane that is for kids.
Good point. And even inside, and don't quote me, I'm no skater either, but. But I think bikes can go in the skate park too, can't they? And they can, and you, and the skate park evolves from beginners. Features the more advanced. So there would be some interaction with bicycles having access in there. So it's not like a good way. Nor do we think that we don't need a bump track at some point somewhere in the Canada. And we're looking for alternative places to do that. We would do it. We're not throwing out the window. We just don't think this is the place to eat a best.
So it's fast. Tom, you guys are thinking that you would make the skate park bigger.
And, and or, yes, and or more green space for soccer fields. I have mixed feelings personally. I'm speaking one out of five people here that we, we can't justify. Having soccer fields for all what we do on Saturday morning for four, three, four, you know, two, two months of. A year where we have the other counties come in and we have big Saturday morning tournaments. You can't justify for that, but we do need a big soccer field. We definitely need a big soccer.
You know, these are great points. I hate to shortchange anybody, but we will get. Four dogs line is back for, uh, 7:03 now.
Okay, very good, Mayor. Let me take, okay, so that was our, that was what we wrote to you. The only other comment that I saw up there was it seems kind of weird to me to bring, bringing act. It, it just, it would be nice to have access to the backend stage. Cause that's how musicians, musicians come in. It seems weird to be coming into the public area, if that's what's here. Thank you. I, and, but our comments are primarily on this sheet. Pretty much everything is. Well, I want to thank everybody, uh. This was a terrific presentation, great input. I, I hope the parties. Uh. I'll call it adjourned at 7:04. And, uh, Tom, I'm, I'm sure you'd like to do the same officially for the ref district. Officially this time I wouldn't, Mayor. All right, since I told the mayor that we did not adjourn our last work session, we're still in session. So let me officially.
It's on the rack.
I mean, if you didn't. Anyway, thank you, Mayor. We appreciate being here. I would, uh, entertain a, a motion to adjourn our meeting. All in favor of adjourned our meeting, say aye please. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everybody. Let's take a five minute break and, uh, we'll reconvene for our regular.
Sorry, that wasn't.
It worked out okay.
Yeah, so did you download the presentation? So you have it? No, let me, maybe I'll review that.
Most of the time this is just like fucking playing.
It's just the grand ones are all over you this.
Yeah, exactly. So I've literally been downloading the software.
It actually worked out fine.
Oh, yes, yes.
I had an offer to go up there, uh, it's Tuesday.
And this could be a part of just the conversation with skate.
There is a lot of taking back.
Yeah, but there's definitely, I don't. Which had a trail, we can't. Trail at the bottom. I don't know if you can do it at the bottom.
Yeah, I don't know. So that goes back to my point is that I think that there's some shared use stuff. I mean. There needs to be some shared use.
It's closed this weekend.
Yeah. If they haven't scored that for the school district. Take the place.
Standing between both of them.
Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to, uh, the April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, uh, regular council session, uh, and I'm going to call it to order at seven twelve. We'll start off with a roll call.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Here.
Jeremy Jones.
Here.
John Curtick.
Here.
Jim Clark.
Here.
And Goffenell.
Here.
Our Cackavale.
Here.
Kate Collier.
Here. All three stand for Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please take your seats. A big congratulations to the wonder, to everybody. Uh, tonight we start off with an agenda. Do I have a motion? Would you approve the agenda for April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three? Thank you, John. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second from our, uh, any discussion? All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, does anyone feel to have a conflict of interest tonight?
That you was mayor on the bills?
On the bills. Uh, thank you, Jimmy and, uh, Scott.
I have a conflict on resume number six, series twenty twenty three.
All right. Uh, anyone else? Welcome to approval of the minutes. Uh, do I have a motion?
I have moved to approve this from April tenth, two thousand twenty three.
Thank you, Mark. Can I second?
I'll second.
A second from Scott. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand and saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Uh, approval of the bills and for tonight, I would ask that we have a motion, uh, to start with the allied, uh, bills. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the bills to April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three for the allied tour bill.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second? Uh, any further discussion? Uh, having none, roll call, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
John Curtick.
Yes.
Goffenell.
Yes.
Our Cackavale.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes. All right. Thank you, man. Uh, do I have a motion, uh, for the remainder of the bill? I'm sorry, uh, uh, yes, do I have a motion for the remainder of the bills for April twenty fourth?
I'm going to approve the bills, uh, excluding the allied showing and include all other bills to April twenty four.
Perfect, Scott. Thank you. Do I have a second? And a second from Jeremy? All right. Any, uh, discussion of the bills? Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Chuck Harmon.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones. John Curtick.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Goffenell.
Yes.
Our Cackavale.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes. Right. Do we have any, uh, other comments?
No, sir.
All right. We don't have the unscheduled. We don't have any liquor licenses. I, uh, we will move to, uh, fighting the foster, uh, Ray, welcome.
Hello, Eric. Hello, everyone. Nice to see, I don't see you, but you see me tonight. I see a beautiful train engine. Um, I'm here to review the March financial statements and I'd like to share my with you. So I'm going to start that now.
Jonathan, is it possible to turn her volume up?
I am sorry, sir. I don't think I can. Uh, if I bring this closer, do you think that'd be helpful?
Yeah. Well, Ray, I appreciate you hanging with us. We had, had some, uh, technical difficulties tonight. I think we patched things together enough that it'll work.
Okay. And I turned my volume. Is that helping?
Uh, I can hear you ask, is that help? Well, that's a, that's pretty good.
Give me one moment. Let me see if I can rig something here.
Sorry, please hang with us here for a minute.
Okay.
Lauren, could you just speak?
Yeah, testing.
Lauren, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Is that better or no?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Give me one more moment. I'm gonna see if I can make it a little better.
Okay.
Can you try it one more time, Lauren?
Yes, how's this?
Is that better? Better. Can you guys hear her? If she speaks, please speak one more time, Lauren.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yeah, it's reasonable.
Okay.
Is, is everybody all right?
If you guys have any questions, I can ask Lauren to and, um, we can cover it.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. Please proceed.
You're welcome, Eric. Well, we're looking at the March financial statements and I always like the because they give you a quarter of the year. So that's kind of a good test of where things are. And also at this point in time, we have completed all of the year end adjustments that are necessary before the audit. So we have some good, um, starting figures to look at. As always, this, this page that shows all the combined, um, various checking accounts, savings accounts. The total billion nine hundred thousand at the end of the first quarter. And the general fund share of that is a million nine fifty nine. And when we go on to the first page of the general fund, it was on page two of the financial statements. You see that cat in the combined fund is a million nine hundred fifty nine. When you go down through this general fund balance sheet, you'll see the fund balance that you're starting twenty twenty three with, which now that twenty twenty two is almost in the books, audit's not done, but we think the adjustments have been done. Maybe not. We think so. Um, you did the year with a million eight eighty nine. Now that's a little less than was in your proposed budget starting fund balance for twenty twenty three. But it's because of the way some unspent revenue has to be recorded. If you look at the fourth line, I'm sorry, the fifth line under liabilities, it says unearned revenue of four hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars. Um, that is ARPA money that hadn't been spent yet in twenty twenty two that will get added back to your fund months for reporting purposes in twenty twenty three. So it, it hadn't been spent in the year the grant was received. So it kind of takes away from your fund balance and goes into this liability, um, section instead. But assuming you spend that, you'll get to keep it and therefore it'll go back into the fund balance at the end of twenty twenty two or beginning of twenty twenty three as we have here. So don't be alarmed if you see that beginning fund balance is less than the budget. That's my point of all that. Um, going on to the next page, we show the revenues and your higher, um, more prominent revenues are highlighted as usual. And many of these come in routinely. Um, property taxes are already at thirty percent. They come in in three chunks normally. So that's about a little under a third for the first chunk. Um, sales taxes is almost twenty five percent with this much of the year elapsed and the first quarter usually is kind of slow. Um, building use tax is usually not very active at this time of year, the winter quarter. And your, um, but your public service, uh, franchise fees are, so they're, they've come in more than, uh, of the twenty five percent of which budgeted for the year. The other taxes, um, are generally coming in fine. Um, highway users at twenty percent and county road and bridge, which is pretty routinely a quarterly revenue is at twenty six point nine. Going on to the next page, you've got some leases and rents that come in. So those are coming in strong. And the total fund revenue is highlighted at the bottom there, the general fund. Uh, just a little under a quarter of what's budgeted for the year has come in through the first quarter. So that's looking good. Uh, when you look through the rest of the, um, expenditures here, starts, starting with streets, um, you'll see it's right around twenty five percent, a little under for the first quarter. Um, there's only one that a little bit different from what you would expect at this time of year. And that was this building inspector. One is at fifty seven point six percent of what's budgeted and spent through the first quarter. And so you may be, um, want to take a look at that or see if that's because of not having a planner that the, um, there's, there's higher expenses here, but that's just one to keep our eye on. Police is at twenty two point seven percent for the, after the first quarter. So it's a little under twenty five percent. So that's good. Court expenditures is right on the nose, as are the transfers as planned to the fire department. And parks is under, which is typical for the winter quarter. But going to the last page of the general fund, you were, your expenditures are just right around twenty five percent, a little under. And twenty five hundred of the year has elapsed. So the budget is looking good for the general fund. I'm going to skip the trust fund. There's no activity there. Go to the ramp fund and it shows the, you have, are starting the year with seven hundred and two thousand, four hundred, five dollars. And again, this money will be drawn down. It's getting, um, interest earnings now, but it will be drawn down as you continue to spend it for expenses in the, on streets, on a, the Colorado Bowl. The improvement fund is starting with a fund balance of five million, one sixty eight. And actually going to go back to that page. You'll see we reduced those advances that are due. Um, we went ahead and paid off the smaller ones and you, we paid off half of the second largest one in twenty twenty two. And then this largest one of the two million two is something that we're going to be addressing this year as to coming up with a plan for how to repay that. Um, from the wastewater fund to the improvement fund. But it's looking better having those assets repaid as cash rather than, uh, receivables, those smaller ones that we're sitting there as well. Sales tax here is pretty much the same story as what you get in the general fund. Same with building, uh, use tax. Um, parking revenue doesn't go here anymore. There's a um, enterprise fund now. So these are all looking good. And here's the expenditures, which are usually slower in the beginning of the year, um, before your capital projects get going. If you look at this budget, all of your big line items here, um, will have activity before the year end, but right now park improvements is, I'm sorry, that's twenty twenty two. There hasn't been much, um, happening yet in the improvements, uh, due to the time of year and some other factors more, more than likely. Conservation trust fund, you've got your quarterly revenues have come in. They're at thirty percent of what's budgeted. So come in a little stronger from those lottery funds than expected. And, uh, projects are scheduled for this perhaps in the summer, but nothing has happened yet for parks. Street funds started with a million five, sorry, a million six eighty five. So far you've had revenues of sales taxes come in to the most a quarter million, and that's right around, uh, twenty five percent of what you budgeted. It's nice to see some interest earnings with reasonable numbers now that interest rates have gone up. Um, and expenditures are, are slow again at this time of year for the street sales tax. Fund. Here we go with water. And its total fund equity is six million one. And again, I always point out that most of that is in your, in the ground. But you do have cash of a million eight. So that's looking pretty strong there. Charges for services, you bill every other month. So you're at eighteen point two percent for the water fund so far. And then the expenditures will just go to the totals. Are, are about twenty percent, nineteen point one for operations. And distribution is thirty five point four percent. You've got some upgrades budgeted for later in the year. And you're at twelve percent of expenditures so far. Sure. I'm sorry, wastewater fund. It still has that big amount owed. And actually both of these, since we saw in the, um, sales tax improvement fund as receivables and there, there are payables here. The two million, two forty one, and then the, the figure above it, the one seventy the two million two forty-one, and then the figure above it, the one seventy-nine four forty-three. You also have a lot of debt in this fund that's going to be paid over time. It's not due this year in, in total. And again, I wanted to look, show you the total net, the total fund equity is seven million three. And again, most of that is, is in the ground. It's the capital S, the land and the improvements that are making up that, that equity. Because when you look at the cash, a million three and some other amounts there, that's less than what you owe back to this sales tax improvement fund. Revenues are coming in similar to the water fund. And operations budget similar to the water fund, twenty-three percent spent of which budgeted so far this year and collections around twenty-eight percent. You've got capital improvements budgeted that have not yet begun. And total expenditures are at thirteen point five percent. Here's that parking enterprise fund. It has pretty much cash balances. There's no capital or fixed assets involved with it at this point. Four hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, you owe a few bills to your parking enforcement contractor probably. And then your parking fees are coming in a little less than a quarter of what's budgeted. And this is the winter quarter. So summer would be bringing more, we would expect. And you've got budgeted some monies that would happen that would come in from C dot if things start rolling on the parking facility. Expenditures are very minor at this point, just some design charges there. Pension fund, oh, that's going away. There's just shown here for historical information as appears in all of the funds. But there's nothing going to be hearing here anymore since that fund is, has filled its purpose. And there are no more pensioners in that fund. That's the March financial statements. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you might have or get back to you with any other information you may desire.
Thank you, counsel. Any questions, Lorraine?
Thank you.
All right. Well, we sure appreciate your time as always, Lorraine. Always very informative. Thank you.
You're welcome, Eric. Nice to be able to do that with you. Appreciate it. I'm glad for your interest. Have a good meeting.
All right, we will move on to resolutions. We have, oh, I'm sorry. Scott will be out of the room during this. At the conclusion, we will go get him. Thanks, Scott. All right, we will have a public hearing on resolution number six, series twenty twenty-three of resolution of providing the final development plan for a Gotti cultivation facility at twenty-eight twenty Colorado Boulevard. And we'll call the hearing at seven thirty-one.
Mayor and counsel, if you'll just give me just a moment, I'm going to pull up my other version of my staff report just so I can. I'm sorry. I'm just going to use this. Okay, I'm ready.
All right, thank you. I'd like to snatch presentation.
Mayor and counsel, you have before you a final development plan proposal for a twenty-eight twenty Colorado Boulevard. Igotti Limited, which is the applicant, and Pennella and Associates, who is the property owner, request approval of a final development plan for the construction of a new marijuana cultivation facility on the property. The building will be located to their existing retail operation there at twenty eighteen Colorado Boulevard. Our city municipal code in chapter twenty-one, our land development regulations, require any new construction facility like this to go through a final development plan process, which includes a public hearing and decision by both planning commission and city council. Planning Commission had, had a hearing about this last week and approved the project with conditions. Existing conditions, this property is located on the northwest corner of Gilson Street in Colorado Boulevard. The total area of the property is about fifteen thousand square feet, although the northern boundary of the property, property goes into Clear Creek and the eastern side of the property goes into Gilson Street. The property has about a hundred and six feet of frontage on Colorado Boulevard and a hundred and thirty-three feet of frontage on Gilson Street. This property, the applicant submitted a land use application. I'm sorry. Not as easy as I was hoping I'd be here. So the applicant and property owner have submitted a land use application to build a new seventy-two hundred square foot marijuana cultivation on the facility, on the property. Previously, there was another marijuana cultivation facility. If you remember here, it was located in a small house and garage, which was about twenty-seven hundred square feet. This property is very constrained in its area. And so in February, they requested a variance from parking restrict, or from parking requirements on the property. The reason is, is that the buildable area of the lot is mostly located on the south side. And with the steep grades that go down to Gilson and then down to the creek, they didn't believe that they could put the parking that was required on this lot. The variance board found that because there is publicly available parking directly in front of the building, that has historically been associated with this property. And because this new marijuana cultivation facility is state of the art and only requires three employees to work. And there's absolutely no, or no public access to this building because it's a marijuana cultivation facility, that it was reasonable to grant a variance from code for those, for the, from parking requirements. So the applicant does not need to provide off-street parking or any of those associated requirements for this project. The FTP process requires a community meeting of the applicant before they're able to submit an FTP application. This happened on February sixteenth. We did not have any public participation in that meeting, although it was noticed to all property owners within three hundred feet of the property. And we noticed it in the paper and here at City Hall in our normal posting places. This property is owned C two, and it's also located in the East End overlay district. Its current classified use is industrial or light manufacturing, which would be the same here. This zoning allows the marijuana cultivation facility to operate. Surrounding use, there's mostly C two zoning, most in the East End overlay district, although there is a residential neighborhood there across the creek. For the review process on this, I spoke to this briefly, but it requires a community meeting before the application happens. It requires an application review by staff, city consultants and other agencies, and planning commission hearing, and then finally, this process, the city council hearing. If you approve this property tonight, this approval will run with the property. The city administrator does have the right to revoke an FTP if it is within a certain timeframe and if conditions aren't met. But typically, that is not what happens. Review criteria for this project. City code says that final development plans shall conform to all use and development standards of the ISMC, which is the Idaho Springs Municipal Code, as well as Idaho Springs Standards and Specifications for Design and Construction and any underlying plan development, which is another process we have in the city that sometimes plays into these processes. Here on the screen, I'll show you, this are the kind of the zoning, the information that we have for the property, as well as the building heights map from the city code. As I said, it's C two, it's in the East End overlay district, which is a special zone district we have in the city. It will be a marijuana cultivation facility. Building setbacks in this zone are generally six to ten feet in the front, ten feet in the rear and five feet in the back. And they are allowed by the East End overlay district. They're located right about here, and they're allowed to go up to fifty-seven feet high in this location. Unobstructed open space requirements is fifteen percent. There's no minimum watt size required, no minimum width at the front setback. And they have a variance from parking spaces. Just as analysis, this proposed building is approximately twenty-three feet tall at the east end and has a ridge on the west entrance that's approximately twenty-eight feet tall. The building does meet the setback requirements of city code and the height requirements of the East End overlay district. The building is approximately sixty-five hundred square feet and the lot is fifteen thousand square feet. So it also meets the unobstructed open space requirement, meaning like fifty-four percent of the lot is open here. And of course, they receive the variance we talked about from off-street parking requirements. The East End overlay district is a kind of interesting area for us for as far as architectural standards go, because there's several different controlling factors for us. One is a marijuana cult, or a marijuana business. There's marijuana regulations that they must follow to comply with with state law and our local regulations. Two, it must comply with chapter twenty-one, which is our general design guidelines. And then three, it must comply with the East End overlay district guidelines, which in general are more strict than chapter twenty-one. This is kind of where the East End overlay district is in this map. You can see it in this orange area here. As far as design setting there, it's largely highway service, commercial developments. There is a type of architecture that's prominent there called Googie architecture, which is associated with like Route sixty-six tourism travel in the nineteen fifties. Our East End Action Plan establishes a vision to build on the character of this area and to support reinvestment over time. A key concept of this plan is the need for future development to address lots between Minor Street and Colorado Boulevard and also between Colorado Boulevard and Clear Creek with active uses in a higher level of architectural detail to support an inviting pedestrian environment. If you envision this property right at Gilson and Colorado Boulevard, you'll remember that the Clear Creek Greenway runs right in front, which is a major pedestrian and bicycle pathway through the city. The major, all development kind of is supposed to build on the architectural themes of the area, which, as I said, are kind of roadside development from the thirties and the fifties. And the building forms and materials typical to Colorado industrial mining. So corrugated tin and metals and, and rust and those kinds of things. The East End Action Plan finally seeks to enhance pedestrian and bicycle safety and connectivity through the east end and includes guidance regarding complete street, streetscape, character and frontage for various street typologies within the east end action plan boundary. So essentially, what the East End Action Plan is trying to do is create active spaces that people engage in from walking and biking and driving over there on the east end there. The, the one, there's a couple of controlling factors in the East End overlay district that are really important to consider for this project. One is, is that this is in what's called a permeable, permeable street edge area. It's located right here. That means that fifty percent of the buildable lot width should be occupied by the front facade of the building. And that it should be located between the maximum and minimum front setbacks. This building, that's a really interesting aspect of it. It needs to be contiguous with the retail operation. So there will be no separation from the existing building at twenty eighteen and twenty and twenty twenty Colorado Boulevard, because they have to be touching. So in some places in the city, we don't like there to be big unobstructed masses of building. But in this particular case, with the marijuana regulations and the way that the East End overlay district is, that's something that we do want to have happen. Exterior materials, there are what are called distinctive materials called out for the East End Action Plan. In general, these are those industrial kind of looking materials. So wood shingles, corrugated metal and tin, wood siding, those kinds of things that hearken back to the early days of the gold rush here. There's also prohibited materials. And these are typically called out as exterior insulated finishing systems or column panel systems. One thing to note about this project is that with construction being the way it is today and building the way it happens, our regulations may not fully take into account the the changes that have been made in these building systems. A lot of them are a lot higher quality than they used to be. It's not just simple, you know, a metal panel that just goes across a whole building. There's a lot of detail reveals and shadows that are created by some of these new panel typologies. And so what I put in my staff report is that these proposed exterior materials that are on the building don't necessarily meet the exact requirements of our city code. That being said, planning commission created a condition that the applicant could provide the city administrator with material boards, and they could be approved by the city administrator if they comply with the general idea of the code, which is to have this industrial mining early nineteen fifties kind of look to the building. We believe that the panels that the applicant can provide can meet this need, even though they are a panel system. This has a number of benefits. One, better insulation values on those panels. And especially with the type of business that's happening here, which is marijuana cultivation, those features are really important here. The other thing is, is that it's much cheaper for the applicant to build a building this way. It'll provide a better building likely than it would if they have to stick build the building there. The applicant has said that if they are not able, if we're not able to come to a agreement on a panel that is appropriate for the city, that they would be willing to stick build, but it'll just take significantly longer at a higher expense. So that was the condition that was placed at planning commission on this particular item. Location-specific standards. Businesses are supposed to be oriented towards the street, which this one is. Parking location are supposed to be behind or to the side of buildings, but this property has a variance from parking. The final kind of consideration for this project is the street level interest requirement of the code. A variety of features are supposed to be incorporated into properties along the East End Action Plan to encourage pedestrian and bicycle activity and activity along storefronts. There's a number of things that are called out in the code, such as transparent storefront windows, display cases, public art, cafe seating, pedestrian plaza, those kinds of things. This building does have some landscaping in front of the property that can be used to activate the space. But again, there has a very constrained building envelope. And with it being a marijuana cultivation facility, there are safety concerns for the property owner and the applicant to make sure that the facility stays secure. So I think that the landscaping they're providing will meet the general requirements of our code. But it is a very small setback from the street. Same thing for clear zone. The code requires a six-foot wide, six to eight-foot wide clear zone in front of the property. And that's kind of like depends on if there's a trail in front of the property, which this one has a greenway trail, which is a sidewalk, but it's technically a trail as well. And this space is supposed to be unobstructed by permanent or non-permanent street furniture. This is a really interesting situation. There's a bull bout on the corner here, and the property lines pre-exist the new conditions on Colorado Boulevard with the new sidewalks and new parking areas. So the property line actually extends into the parking area a little bit. So we worked with the applicant. We think that the, the building meets the required clear zone when you consider all the different factors here. There is an adequate space there, I think, as the code intends for, for that purpose. Final thing, the Clear Creek, the 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 code requires that there be connections between sidewalks in the East End Action Plan. Currently, there is no sidewalk on Gilson Street between the Gilson Street Bridge and Colorado Boulevard. And if you think about that street, there's really not a lot of room there for it to exist. We worked extensively with the applicant and the property owner to determine a way that we could make that connection that the East End Action Plan requires. There are a lot of children and other pedestrians that travel that route every single day. And so we want to try to clean that up if possible. And again, their property line extends into Gilson Street some, I want to say about fifteen feet is where it is. And so the applicant and the property owner have agreed to clean that up through a separate city process. That could be a plat amendment or something else. We haven't quite determined the exact mechanism. But what will happen is the applicant is going to design a sidewalk on the, on the west side of Gilson Street that will make that connection between the bridge and Colorado Boulevard. Now, this will be a narrow sidewalk. It'll be four feet wide. But it will meet ADA grades, and it will be a nice connection along Gilson Street there. And in return, the city is going to build that project. It's a little bit more complicated than a normal sidewalk just because of the grades that exist there on the property. And we thought that this was a really good way to get that connection that we really need to clean up the Gilson Street right away and to make sure that the applicant meets the requirements of city code. And so we think that that is a good condition of approval here. Just a little bit on the Clear Creek frontage. I mentioned a little bit that this building needs to be contiguous with the retail operation. That means it's going to be a large mass of building on this property, which means there's going to be no view shed from Colorado Boulevard to the creek. That being said, this building is on the corner. It's also significantly lower than the maximum height allowed in this zone district, almost half by half. And so I think that the really important thing is that the marijuana, the laws that we have, regulations for marijuana facilities are followed in this situation. It being on the creek, you can also see the, you are on the corner, you can see the creek from the east side of the property. And I think for the most part, that view shed on that side will be maintained. And I think for the most part, um, that view shed on that side will be maintained. One thing I wanted to mention here, it's not really pertinent to the FTP process, but the applicant has shown signage on the property. Um, when we get to the point that the applicant is ready to go through the permitting process for signage. Wonder typically handles those permit applications and we look at it from a zoning perspective to make sure that they comply. There is one issue that we want to make sure we put as a condition of approval in this, and that is that the pole sign that is proposed on the property. Be um, have a ten-foot setback as required by city code. Currently, it's a little bit closer to the building than that. We just want to make sure that it's located. Safely on the property, but the other building side requirements will go through wonder and she will make sure that they follow all the requirements of code. JVA had an opportunity to review this application from an engineering perspective. Uh, they had several conversations with the applicant and rectified all of the different things that they needed to see in the in the in the site plan. Um. The only remaining condition that needs to be addressed is the. Uh, planning for the sidewalk, and that's something that we're still working with the applicant with, and that'll be completed before they apply for building permits. Or before they're issued building permits. Uh, we sent this out for referral to a number of city agencies. It went to Clear Creek Fire Authority, to the city attorney, the deputy city clerk, engineering, public works, uh, police and city administration. And we provided public notice as required by city code. Um, the community meeting was held on February sixteenth. Mailing went out on March fourteenth. Um, and then we posted sign on the property as required by code on March twenty-eighth. On the final page of my staff report, I have a, oops, sorry. Uh, a recommended motion. Uh, remember that planning commission approved this on April twelfth. Um, there are the conditions that were laid forth in that meeting in your staff report. Um, the conditions that they created were that amended site plan must be filed and approved by the city administrator. That includes sidewalk and grading details along the west side of Gilson Street from Colorado Boulevard to the Gilson Street Bridge that conforms to the design standards of the city. Property owners shall provide approximately ten feet of the wider way, right-of-way dedication approved by the city. Either by easement or subsequent plot amendment on the east side of the property between Gilson Street Bridge and Colorado Boulevard. Deemed adequate for the maintenance and upkeep of the sidewalk. The proposed pole sign shall be relocated to meet the ten-foot setback requirement. And the applicant will submit to city staff exterior materials that conform to the maximum extent possible. With the East End Action Plan as determined and approved by the city administrator. That's my staff report. I know is a little bit odd with my computer setup here, but if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Uh, let me ask, uh, does, you know, does the applicant wish to, uh, make any change? You're welcome if you'd like.
Say your name and address for the record.
Ava Michael, four twenty-two, Iron Horse Way, Winter Park, Colorado. And I am uh owner and general counsel.
You raise your right hand? You swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and.
I stuck the, you, why talk about images?
So first of all, I wanted to thank your staff. They were incredibly tall. Both Mr. Marshall and Mr. Uh, and I think the project turned out to be one that was better for us in terms of the overall project. And, you know, really addressed the concerns. We found the process seamless, very cloudy. You know, Agati is the applicant, obviously. Now, as a comment. We, uh, as you can see from what's being proposed, um. When you really get down to it, this will be a substantial improvement in terms of aesthetics of this guy. The old house that was there. Shouldn't have gone in. Um, and it had a lifespan on it. And when it was done. But what we're basically doing is the same activity we've been doing on that property since we fired the crime line in December of two thousand sixteen. And it was the same activity was going on there. Since we've been here, been active in the community, social society and. And uh, we really do uh love our relationship with the community and. City. Uh, we're excited about this. Uh, most people aren't building cultivations right now. They're gonna. I'm usually thinking that, I'm sitting with that, you know, what we think is going to be valuable issue to. For our company. This, I know Spring Store was our third store. We're opening our tenth store now. We're a hundred and seventy-five people across the state. At day one, when you start with us. Fifty percent paid. Not a lot of companies do that, something. Twenty twenty-one, when we saw the effects, they could want to. And there's no excuses why they would. I'm happy to go into more details describing the project, but I felt that Mr. King did an exceptional job, really laying out. What the project is, what the effects will be, and what the aesthetics will be. We're comfortable with the conditions that planning commission approved. And um, you know, an interest efficiency. I'm happy to go into a description of the project, but would be also happy to, you know, stop my presentation. Really address more of your concerns to a question and answer if I can. Um, unless you do have and would like me to go walking through the project. Um, I was actually gonna ask if uh any of members of council has questions, uh, either for the applicant or our staff.
Yeah, I realize chapter twenty-one does not call all. Hey, oh, air filtration on HVACs. Just wondering if you consider just like her complaints of too much pot over. When you're growing stuff.
Well, certainly it's a concern. I can guarantee you that uh. The the city with the insulation we're proposing and we'll have all inline carbon filtration is going to be a substantial improvement or step forward. Um, this is a state-of-the-art facility. We uh we grow without odor in most locations. Um, that house was not ideal. To permit the wood materials. It's one of the reasons why we're asking to have the metal building and have a panel. It's going to create a better vapor barrier and that will, well, we can control any, you know. Smell emissions that will come out of it. You know, we have inline carbon filtration. And then we put chem filters throughout as well, which serve a couple of different purposes. It's not just for smell. But it does remove smell while it also purifies the air, it's better for the nation environment. So absolutely.
Follow John's question. Yes, John, any question? Um, I thought that was already in the, the, the. Now, issue was a big concern. We started talking about this many years ago. But that was already in our code, so that that, but John's question is is great, because I hundred percent agree.
I think that the marijuana section of the code does address smell. Uh, and it certainly addresses, I mean, there's been. There's another facility in town where this has come up a little bit, but I do think this facility does have. Um.
Oh, I think, I, it sounds like you guys are on a hundred percent the right track. So I'm just asking you directly. Maybe it's something that we roll back to.
It's in the marijuana regulations and it might be something we can look at again and and just make sure they're to where we want them to be.
If, if I may, um, in almost every city code and county code I have ever encountered and uh. I was a land use attorney before starting up Agati. Uh, there is generalized provisions against nuisance. You know, odor, smell, dust, and I I'd be shocked if it doesn't reside somewhere within your code as a general condition. That, you know, we have to respect, not to mention the fact that, you know, we don't really want it to smell. We don't want it. We want it to be positive.
I wasn't really, I was funny enough for you. I was agreeing with John and thinking that that is a concern throughout the the city. So I think your study would be fine.
There's always issues with with odor that we need to address. Um.
You're not the only one. There's lots of, there's lots of smells in our town.
And so we make certain of it.
Well, let's call this verbiage. Is there going to be a smell? There's a.
Not going to be, no. Yeah, I mean, look, it's, we have, we've got facilities throughout the state. It will, it's very easy to curtail the smell. Um, you know, carbon filtration is generally sufficient enough.
This is the same. Facility, this is the same as your original facility, the filtration.
Yes.
And that doesn't have that. I don't believe that has that.
No, Tavernash has zero issues. And look, uh, you know, we have, we also have a mandatory requirement in place there, but we have zero emissions. We haven't had. You know, one time we had a complaint, the door was up to open during a harvest. It was a one-time event. We addressed the concern. We made sure that we put SOPs in place to ensure it doesn't happen again. I'm not saying there's never going to be a problem, but we're the type of citizen that is going to address, take it very seriously if there is. Investigate, understand if there's a mechanical malfunction or if there's a system that we need to add or if there was some sort of. Personnel breakdown and not following the SOPs that produced an order, we'll make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Um, it, it doesn't look like your building actually, I mean, obviously you have some sort of emergency access to the outside. But it doesn't, there's nobody walking in and out of your building, walking into the facility where you purchased.
Yes.
And that goes for employees.
Yes.
Okay.
There will be some doors that go in between the two spaces.
Right.
But they are not going to be generally used, except for just immediate access. Um, and the exterior doors are only in the rear of the building and on the side of the uh, the front of the building.
This is a loading door.
Because we're doing this the way we're going to build it, um, you know, one or any three personnel, very limited deliveries. You know, just, I would be shocked if there was an odor issue, but in the event that there was, you better believe we're going to take it extremely seriously and make sure that we've addressed any situation that. This doesn't happen again. There's always, nothing is perfect. Nothing is guaranteed in this world, but um, what you do have my guarantee on is that it won't be a persistent condition.
Yes, sir. So the plan is the Eastern Action Plan requires a sidewalk to be constructed along Gilson Street on. Eh, on the property to make sure that there's a sidewalk connection if there's a development that happens. This is a area where there's a really significant grade going into the building. Um, and it's kind of a tricky project because there's, there's utilities in the roadway there. There's a lot of different kind of. Important infrastructure in that bridge. So the agreement that we made um was that. The applicant would design the sidewalk and they'd ensure, because because of the way the foundation of building is, they'll design the sidewalk. They'll provide the city right away, which is important to us because when Colorado Boulevard was devolved from a state highway into a city street. Not everything lined up as neatly as it should have. And so one of the things we've been trying to do is work with property owners like Mr. Pennell to. Ensure that uh where the right of way that we know as the right of way is lines up with the plaque that we have. And so the agreement we made with the applicant, because this sidewalk is relative, is going to be a little bit complicated. To construct and it's likely going to be an easier project for the city to do than for the applicant to do, because it's not just throwing down concrete in this situation. It may possibly involve some other um engineering features that are yet to be designed a little bit. But essentially what we've done is they've agreed to clean up that right of way and to provide us the right of way to do the sidewalk. And they're going to design the sidewalk and then we're going to go ahead and build it at a later time. Um, probably as we do another project on that side of town where we can get the economy to scale. Um, I would imagine that it's not insignificant, but I think that. We can probably get it done. I, Andy, do you have, I don't know if you have an idea. I think it's really hard to guess how much construction projects cost right now, because every time we say. Thirty thousand dollars and it's, you know, thirty-five percent more, but I think that we're seeing some pressure on the construction to come down. So I think that we can probably do it relatively inexpensively. We also may have an opportunity to apply for um. A GOCO grant or something to that effect, because it is related to the Greenway Trail. It's an access to the Greenway Trail. So we may be able to access funding as well that could help pay for that project. Um, and it's a relatively short stretch. It's like, it's gotta be, is it, you think it's. Like a hundred and twenty feet maybe or something like that, something, something like that. I think it's going to probably be not cheap, but I don't think it's going to be more than two hundred thousand dollars, maybe a hundred thousand dollars at maximum, but that's just me guessing.
And what, what is the, uh, what is the potential gain to the city from marijuana?
So the city gets a marijuana transfer tax, which is something that we have gotten for several years, but recently it was increased. Um, there's three stable jobs in our community and I think that uh we just heard about. That they're, they're relatively well-paying and they have good uh benefit plan, which is really good. Um, it creates interest on that lot, which is a good thing on that side of town. Um, it's going to beautify that section, which right now we got a dirt pit, which is not ideal. Um, for the entryway to our town. I think the building is relatively attractive. It's probably going to be. Um, you know, it, it's going to match the typology of the city and it's going to be something that can be used for a long time in our community. And I think Agati has been a good community partner with us. When you consider their retail operation as well, they've been here now for several years and we do get um. Relatively significant tax dollars from from this industry and they've been a really good partner that. From a city staff perspective and administrative perspective, we haven't had to. Come and say, well, what are you guys doing now? You're selling to kids or what are you doing now? You're doing this or that. So I think that they've just been a good community partner. They create sales tax in our community. They create jobs in our community. And it's going to make that corner, I believe it's going to make it safer. The other thing about it that I really like about this particular project is that. Even though we do not require dark sky lighting on a property at this time, the applicant went ahead and did that because they know that their property has impact on residential neighborhood. So they took effort to make sure that it complies with with things that make quality of life better around operations like that. So. I don't think it's two hundred thousand dollars. I think that it's less than that. I just don't know what the cost is.
I think I believe that the marijuana tax budgeted this year at about a hundred grand.
That is a good question. So the property is owned by Agati and uh now the seeds. So as long as it's within the realm of what is allowed in that area. They're allowed to do it no matter what. So we're just agreeing that that's allowed, that's going to happen. Is that what I'm? I, I have a follow-up, so I'm trying to get to that. So no matter what they decide to do on that corner, that sidewalk has to be prepared.
The sidewalk is required by the East End Overlay District?
Right.
So yes, I would say that, yes.
So no matter, no matter what goes in there, it, it has to get done and that is part of what we had agreed to when we put the overlay. The east side of town. So who, who's going in next to the sidewalk really doesn't matter. It's that we have to do the sidewalk no matter what. That, am I on the right?
Yeah, and we did, we, there was negotiation about the sidewalk project. And I think it was fairly noted that this is a complicated engineering project. Um, one of our concerns was we don't want to mess up the foundation of the building because of the way that the building needs to be constructed. That's why. Why we think, you know, right-of-way acquisition, there's, there's a value to that too. So we're required, we're going to acquire a significant. I, I don't know the exact amount, but a significant amount of right-of-way, which allows us to um normalize Gilson Street and create that sidewalk and make sure it's in the city. Um, the other thing to remember is the applicant still has responsibility or well, the applicant, the property owner, depending on how you guys do it, still has snow removal responsibility for that. So it's not something the city is going to take care of. Um. But this seemed to be the best way to kind of meet the need of making sure that a complex sidewalk gets created. Um, that we clean up the right of way and that we accomplish the goal of the East End Overlay District. It's been, it's been a, it's been a goal of the city for some amount of time now, um, since I've been in the city for sure. During the East End, I guess in the Colorado Boulevard process, uh, project, this came up as well, but. I think there was, there's, this has always been a, uh, I guess Andy might speak to this better because he was managing that project, but. There's always been complexity on that street. And so this project just allows us to take care of that issue.
A lot of great continuity there are, like if you walk down there and you kind of want to come around the corner, it, it doesn't. You go from this great walkway to the, nothing, you know, it's like. And there, and you've got, you've got a lot of kids in that neighborhood. So for them to cross over to go to the park, it's just.
That is our budget condition?
We haven't specifically itemized that uh that this because we've built the budget last year. And this project came up, um, I think you guys started working in December is about when you were working, so. It isn't in the budget, but um our capital improvement budget does include sidewalk work. And if we were to get a grant. I think we could probably identify matching funds for it, or we could also begin the work to budget this for uh twenty twenty-four. I don't know, Andy, if we have any specific funds we could use.
If I might, just from a cost benefit analysis, um. It's economically unusable for us to build that sidewalk as part of this. This budget is on a razor's edge. Marijuana years ago was selling for. Twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars a pound, if that was six hundred and fifty dollars a pound. Because of overproduction and the fact that we have to sell within the confines of the state of Colorado, we can't export in or import out. So it creates an artificial market. The reality is, is that if we, if you force Mr. Pennell to pay for the sidewalk, that's who would be paying for this. Um, it really puts the project. Um, it really puts the project, you know, probably out of where it makes sense financially for us to go forward. So the status quo right now is a hole in the ground. It's not producing any tax revenue. The property is devalued as well. This construction project is going to be a significant improvement aesthetically. It will produce more tax revenue to be growing significantly larger space, producing more um, more flour, more product, which will have the excise tax, which then will go into, will go to the city. So it's gonna generate a lot more revenue. Um, the sidewalk, while I think it's always, um, this is reasonable for the, to be the city's goal, for the applicant to pay for that, that public, which they necessarily see any true benefit. Um, in this instance, the property is a mess. Probably all along that section, that, that, that side of Colorado Boulevard, now as a real estate attorney, is a mess from a surveying perspective and from a boundary. This is gonna clean it up. What Mr. Pinnell was doing is giving up a substantial portion of this property. For the purpose of allowing the city to come in and build the sidewalk, does it need to be built this year, next year, five years from now? That's up to the city. So there's no economic impact unless the city decides to go ahead with the budget, because the economics public need or the funds are available from another location where you're working on another project, where this is, there's a economy of scale mobilization of materials. So with all that, we, that's why we negotiated what we negotiated. But if you look at the status quo and you look at what's happening with that property at this project, it's a win-win. It's net gains.
Really briefly, just so you can see, this is the area we're talking about here. This is the property line as it currently sits. You can see it extends quite a ways into Gilson Street. This is where the sidewalk is proposed to be, a four-foot sidewalk. And we would need to make sure we are able to access that for maintenance and everything. So we are really talking about a swath of property here. This wide here, so it basically go from the very edge of the building out into Gilson Street. And then you can see on the front here, this is the property line here, and you can see it extends into the the parking. So this, this property has a long history with Colorado Boulevard reconstruction. And so obviously this was right away from the highway. So that's kind of why that happened. But this cleans up all of these issues, which make the administration and maintenance of this issue of this area significantly easier. One other thing that we didn't talk about that is gonna become better with the sidewalk is if you imagine coming up Gilson Street here, if you're coming out of Starbucks or just coming up from the neighborhood back here, the sight line here to turn is significantly impacted, because you have to stop way back here. This is gonna make some improvements to this area and it may not be perfect, but it's going to make it so that when the kids are picked up over here for school, it's gonna be easier. There's gonna be better sightlines, I believe, and I think it's gonna be a lot safer for for these residents that live back in, in the
What you think that will be in the year?
I don't have the numbers in front of me, so that's a very challenging um, thing for me to do. I'm a attorney by training now. But, you know, we look at what's going to be produced out of this facility versus what was the facility that is no more. Um, the way that it gets calculated is they use what's called the AMR. Um, everything we produce gets sold through our stores. So right now it's six hundred and fifty-eight dollars a pound, is what I think AMR. We put it at six fifty. At five percent city, that's, you know, total, thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents per pound. Um, in one of the grow rooms that's being proposed, we'll likely be producing worth of fifty pounds if we're doing well per round. And we're trying to get five to six pounds rounds per year, and we have three of those flowers. So it's a substantial amount.
Well, we get that tax whether or not you think that marijuana should
Actually, yeah, you get to know what.
It's based on the transfer.
Facility, or moment there's a transfer of that, that goes um, unless it goes to another cultivation, the taxes here. That's the only time where there is no tax.
Soon as it goes out the door, that's the tax point.
But, yeah, I'm sorry. But as you say, it's, if we wholesale it, which we don't do, it would be for the five percent would be on whatever the contract amount was for that wholesale. We just, we just sell it for us, or turn it into concentrate. I'm sorry, sir.
Does, no, no. Does the, does our, does any of our sales tax money go to the, the improvement ones? Or, you know, our streets? Needs the sidewalks then?
So our sales tax goes to street improvements and water improvements. Street improvements typically include sidewalks and that's been how we Yeah.
They're growing, there doesn't certainly mean
Uh, not necessarily, however, there will be there will be a viewable element. There's, there will be, in our, our first location in Tabernash, what we did was we wanted people to look at marijuana as plant rather than drug. And so what we did is we showed the whole, the whole life cycle. When you walk in, there's a window that shows a door clone, when you tune into our bedroom, which is a plant starts to mature. And then we have a twenty by ten observation, three large windows, you can see a couple of hundred plants in two stages of flower. We saw a drastic increase in that sale base, that shouldn't be there based on demographics. In part because of that, we're gonna have a viewable element here, which should also increase sales as well. Um, that we think will be of intrigue in interest and the benefit of the highway. Um, but it, it's, you know, not something that um, we think is gonna have dramatic effect, but do you think it is gonna impact sales and make them more, which will create more taxes? And that's one of the reasons we're doing a cultivation project right now. If you look across the state of Colorado, people are surrendering licenses. Costa of marijuana, so level is almost effectively, unless you have to scale. Um, so this project makes no economic sense, as stable on with a viewable element, I think it would. Yep. On top of that, um, you know, we've got this property really uh, we're gonna renew our lease on it. Yeah, we want to put something in there that's more attractive and that's gonna help with sales. You know, so one of the things that we're gonna do also, if you go back to it, um, the picture, uh, we're taking down the shingles um, awning in front of the liquor store and the retail and putting up a much more attractive awning. We think it's gonna have more of that mind work and more of what the city wants to see. And so, you know, what we're hoping, we think will be the, uh, fairly certain, not to sound arrogant, but we're gonna do them in this. And now what my hope is, is that this is gonna be something that uh, makes that neighborhood really hot and that the commercials rises up to that level as new things get built, uh, which was the, I think, design and the, the intent of these.
It is, it is decent.
Yeah.
If you think so scientifically, it's not.
Uh.
I mean, is that what?
It's a medicine too.
No, 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 I don't want to.
Certainly. So there's a lot of ways to think about this, right? What should be a drug and what should not be a drug? Um, you know, this is a nutraceutical that has medicinal components to it. There's a lot of empirical evidence as well as studies that show that it helps people who are suffering from pain, nausea, uh, and all sorts of other things. And if you're consuming it recreationally, um, I mean, I don't think we consider alcohol a drug. We always say drug and alcohol. I think marijuana is something that doesn't necessarily belong in a category that's looped in with crack or cocaine or methamphetamines. I was a DA in this district. I prosecuted PepsiCo. And, you know, I think that it's time to have a different look at it. It's still a scheduled one controlled substance federally. If you look at what we've done in the state of Colorado and the success of this industry, it certainly merits a different consideration than that of the past, where it's linked in with a bunch of other substances that I don't think it mirrors.
Controlled substance.
Absolutely. It's a federally controlled substance. However, they have issued letters that they do not think that it's within the federal government's purview or their benefit to enforce it. Where states have created illegal means of dispensing it, which Colorado has. So the Department of Justice would only step in when somebody's acting outside of state.
Being in the, being in the business here, really?
Yes.
Do you think there's a black market or wanting to say?
I, can I make a comment? This is about the land use regulations related to this building and not the merits of but it's not, it's not relevant and it's
But I agree.
By the way, I understand that. I'm saying it's not.
Understood.
You have an item before you in a quasi judicial setting, and I think it's important that you consider that item um, without.
Well, we can get into the philosophy or whatever else we want to call it of what this business is.
That's where we went wrong. Dylan brought up some very interesting.
I, I, I welcome your questions, but unfortunately we've gone into these spirals before and I think the question at hand is are we, as a council, letting this business go forward based on its historical, historical, that it has been this business before? And it's gonna be a new building from the eastern of town. I think that's the question. Am I correct?
Also, I just think Art had a really valid point about cost of the sidewalk. And I believe at thirty-two fifty a pound, this is based on six hundred and fifty dollars. Thirty-two fifty a pound, with the pounds, the seven thousand square foot produces. I can't believe I was doing a little back in the app, but I can't believe the payback could be any more than five to seven years. That's even worst case scenario if we didn't get uh, any type of grant. So I believe it was a very valid question that we needed to delve into.
And so these are the lowest prices it's ever been. They track every three months, those sales, and then raise or lower the AMR based on past performance. I fully expect that the number of licenses that have been surrendered, that what we're gonna see shortly with is that the price because of the lack of supply will go up. Um, a third of, and, and look in our industry right now, I just saw an article, thirty jobs have been lost. Um, and we haven't laid off anyone. Um, we have, while revenue is down, but our market share is up. Um, and it's a tough environment and a tough economy. Um, but we're managing to, you know, keep a good business going, keep people employed. And uh, we think that that in and of itself is a real benefit. And on top of that, as prices do start to go up, I think you can see a larger yield from these excise taxes, as well as increased sales taxes by virtue of the nicer building that's gonna happen.
Well, I appreciate that, but of course there's no guarantee that prices will go up. I'm only revisiting that, because even if they don't go up, I think at thirty-two fifty a pound, uh, this is a significant revenue generator for the state.
I believe it will be.
Jimmy, I'm sorry, I think you had your head up earlier.
I know.
Uh, any further questions? And I do not want to shortchange the applicant if there's
If there's no further concerns, I'm happy to uh, end my presentation.
All right. Well, thank you, Ben. Uh, anything more from staff?
I know, sir.
All right. Just to reiterate that, um, that property line is in the middle of Gilson. Yeah. Okay, so what's it, I was doing is, is uh, it's the right, he's given us the use of that property as we're building this sidewalk there. That in mind. All that's important and uh, I, I think we got a glimpse of that up there on the uh, on the plaque and that is a very important point. Uh, it, it cleans up the mess up.
Yes.
All right. Um, if there's nothing further, and by the way, just for the record, uh, we, we had no further comments. I will, uh, I'm sorry. Oh, Carmen, did you have something, Dad? All right.
Okay, sure.
That's okay. Uh, I will call uh, this uh, this during adjournment at eight twenty-two. I would like to make a motion. Uh, I move to approve Resolution Number Six, Series Twenty Twenty-three, a resolution conditionally. Approving a final development plan on a property known as Twenty Eight Twenty Old Road Boulevard for a marijuana cultivation center. Uh, based upon the findings made on the record of this matter, I move to approve uh, the final development plan for the Agati uh, amended marijuana cultivation facility at Twenty Eight Twenty Old Road Boulevard. Uh, the conditions being as follows. One, prior to the issuance of any permit related to the plan, the following shall occur. Eight, an amended site plan must be filed and approved by the city administrator. That includes sidewalk and grading details along the west side of Gilson Street from Colorado Boulevard to the Gilson Street Bridge that conform to the design specifications of the city of Idaho Springs. B, property owner shall provide approximately ten feet width right away dedication approved by the city, either by easement or subsequent flat amendment on the east side of the property between the Gilson Street Bridge and Colorado Boulevard need adequate with maintenance and upkeep, Gilson Street and the installation of a new sidewalk. C, the proposed pole sign shall be relocated beneath the ten-foot setback requirement. D, the applicant will submit to the city staff exterior materials that conform to the maximum extent possible with the Eastern Action Plan as described and approved by the city administrator. Do I have a second?
No.
Uh, Kate, uh, I had a second and uh, any further discussion? I hear none. Roll call please.
Mary Jessica Carmen.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Don Curtis. Tim Clark.
Yes.
Art Cacavelli.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes. Right. Uh, congratulations and uh, thank you for your time tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'll let Scott know and come back.
You do that in your head or do you really write that down?
It's super funny. Did you enjoy your downtime?
Longest thing on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, thanks a lot, you know. It's all about it.
All right. Uh, so we have one more on uh, resolutions, as resolution number seven. Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve Resolution Number Seven, Series Twenty Twenty-three, Resolution Adopting New and Revise City Employee Job Descriptions.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second? I said, uh, thank you, Art. On the second, any discussion? I have no roll call please.
Mary Jessica Carmen.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
I'm Curtis. Tim Clark.
Yes.
Scott Fennell.
Yes.
Art Cacavelli. Kate Collier.
Yes.
Okay, we have no uh, first reading, second reading, uh, anything from city attorney tonight? All right. Um, city administrator, uh, Andy, it looks like uh, you have three requests for actions. All right. Uh, I'm gonna go through those three and just make sure you don't have further. Do I have a motion on the first one regarding Ed Sigler?
I move to approve the promotion of Ed Sigler to the position of water facility superintendent at a salary of ninety-three thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars effective April fourth.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second? A second from uh, Jeremy? And uh, any discussion? There are none. Roll call please.
Mary Jessica Carmen.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones. Don Curtis.
Yes.
Don Clark.
Yes.
Scott Fennell.
Yes.
Art Cacavelli.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Thank you. Uh, we will also move, and I will ask uh, if I could have a motion on Paul Cranes.
Move to approve the promotion of Paul Crane to the exempt position of public works superintendent at a salary of ninety-three thousand six hundred and ninety-nine effective April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second for Mark. Uh, any further discussion? There are none. Roll call please.
Mary Jessica Carmen.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones. Don Curtis.
Yes.
Tim Clark.
Yes.
Scott Fennell.
Yes.
Art Cacavelli.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Next up, proposal for Empire demolition. Uh, do I have a motion?
Move to approve a proposal for Empire demolition and property services LLC. The amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars for demolition, city-owned Jacob House at fifteen, I'm sorry, one fifteen fifteenth avenue, count from line item nine dash seventy, dash seventy-nine, zero, one.
Thank you, Kate. Do I have a second? A second, Jim? And uh, any discussion? There are none. Roll call please.
Mary Jessica Carmen.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones. Don Curtis. Tim Clark.
Yes.
Scott Fennell.
Yes.
Art Cacavelli.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes.
Andy, anything further tonight? Okay. Okay. Uh, let's see here. Uh, city administrator, uh, Jonathan, anything that you would like to share with us?
I'd just like to note that the city, uh, matched with Best and Brightest fellow today. Uh, her name is Shoshone, and she will be starting this summer.
Yes. Good to know. All right. I have one thing on that topic under the mayor. Uh, wonder, uh, anything further for us? Okay. All right. Thank you. Police department, uh, chief's got a couple of things here. Uh, first of all, on this, uh, donation of the two thousand and six Dodge, we have a motion.
Move to authorize police department to donate following city property to thirty. First, maybe it's used for purposes. Item number one, two thousand and six Dodge Durango. Last four of the then is seventy.
Thank you, Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Kate. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mary, so Carmen.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones. Don Curtis.
Yes.
Tim Clark.
Yes.
Scott Fennell.
Yes.
Art Hackavelli.
Yes.
Kate Collier.
Yes. Kate, the last thing chief has up is, uh, uh, authorization, the, uh, two thousand and fifteen Ford Interceptor.
Move to authorize the police department to auction the following city property. Uh, the twenty fifteen Ford Interceptor Explorer last, am I doing the right one?
Yes.
Just, yeah, that's worth one thousand.
Uh, thank you, Kate. Do, uh, I have a second. A second from Jimmy. Uh, any further discussion? There are none. Roll call, please.
Mary, so Carmen.
Yes.
Jeremy Jones.
Yes.
Don Curtis.
Yes.
Jim Clark.
Yes.
Scott Fennell.
Yes.
Art Hackavelli.
Yes. Uh, Public Works, uh, no requests for action in the time, requests for action. Uh, water, waste water. Uh, Ed, you got anything?
No, thank you. You have my report. I have no requests for action. Congratulations.
Very well deserved, and just for, uh, council's benefit. Uh, I would, and I don't care who chimes in, that I would like for council to be brought up to speed on the twenty-two-year-old pickup truck that was resurrected from the dead. Uh, I think for, for you, Ed.
I, I love that truck. It works brilliantly.
Okay. Uh, the ABS lights on, but it's not keeping the brakes for it.
I mean, I'd, oh, no, please, Jim. I'd like to mend that as well on this, rather than putting a item action in for a fifty-six thousand dollar truck.
Yeah, I was just going to add replacement.
We're shooting the old horse that did.
Ed's like, I like this old truck. He's like, put a battery in it. Couple shops a week, and he came down to the shop, looked at some things with us and stuff, and it was really, really cool. I, I just, he was yeah, I commend him for, um, you know, making that decision and not, and treating it like, you know, it was almost his money and his truck, you know, that. And so that, that was his, that was pretty cool. So that was the bill that was that we did for this month. Yeah. And we did a ton of work to that thing. And got her back rolling on the street. It's actually a pretty rad little vehicle. So, yeah.
I mean, thirteen hundred dollars versus the alternative replacement.
Yeah.
I just want to say thank you.
Yeah. And that truly was all that he was, you know, he's very, very positive of what the city, you know, was spending and doing. So that was, right?
I don't want to listen to the St. Walton story, you know, if you used to.
Yeah, you know.
You used to squeeze a dog in the back.
I know, yeah, exactly.
All right. Well, I just, I felt it was important, uh, for council to hear that outside of the box thinking there. So thank you, uh, both of you for uh, bringing about some speed on that. Um, under, uh, the mayor, I was, uh, going to mention, uh, Shoshone, uh, coming, you know, that stipend is incredibly small, Preston, right, it's like twenty grand. So, uh, we have a vacant house, frankly, it's not doing anybody any good. I don't, I don't think it's good for the houses that they can either. If council was all right, I was going to offer it to her, uh, for her to live there. Round to the spruce up in there, but she will pay the utility bills and no longer be a vacant.
I mean, that sounds like a really great long-term solution to our intern having room and board. That's nothing that we need.
Yeah, frankly, twenty grand, as you know, there's nothing.
No way.
Yeah, nothing. I would hope Jonathan ended up staying with us long term. I mean, we can cross our fingers. Maybe it ends up being something, you know, more permanent in the community, but probably, you know, in the next two years, that house is going to get demolished or moved. Uh, but anyways, I, I think it would go to good use. Off all. Particularly as tiny as that stipend is. Uh, yes, Carmen.
A terrific idea. I will mention that there are probably tax implications that if that is a benefit, uh, of her employment, she may be taxed on that. So that's something that, um, we could, as a city, offer to her, um, and maybe extend her the time to evaluate that and get her own maybe tax or legal advice on any sort of taxation consequences for her. Um, that's one thought I had on that, mayor.
And I, what if we charge her five dollars for, for a year or something? Well, you know, I, I also had the thought, uh, this house is a liability sitting there vacant. Uh, with a caretaker, uh, position, the possibility. Because we literally do risk either in a being burnt down, uh, all the pipes freezing, and she would be paying the utilities around her. But the pipes wouldn't freeze. We won't have it burned down or broke into vandalized like our restaurants seem to be all the time.
Yeah. We could, um, again, if that's extended to her as, um, something that we're willing to work with her on and, and and, and allow her to do if she's interested in, in the least, you know, expensive way to her. Obviously, I'm more than willing to, to help with that, mayor.
Okay. Well, well, thank you. Uh, we'll look to some guidance on that, Carmen. Thank you. Um, uh, also, uh, Scott has a history lesson for us tonight, please, about a Spanish bar, right?
Uh, Boland delivered another one, so little did we know that hole in the mountain up above the Stanley. I didn't know this history. Interesting. Called the Spanish Bar Mining District and Square Hole. Easily, easily visible from the west end of Idaho Springs, the square hole chiseled into the east facing cliff above and slightly west of the Stanley Mine. That feature preceded Jackson eighteen fifty-nine gold strike here by an unknown number of years. It was noted in the earliest newspapers. What is known is that the earliest American, European gold seekers, Fifty Niners encountered Hispanic classers, miners working Clear Creek, clean today's Idaho Springs and Fall River during the warmer seasons. Numerous shallow prospect holes in the surrounding mountainsides presumably dug in the same early miners. Also noted by the Forty-Niner, the Fifty-Niners. Spanish Bar Mining District is one of the earliest mining districts formed in Colorado and refers to sand and gravel bars along Clear Creek. These naturally occurring sand and gravel bars were worked by the early miners. Little is known about these early miners, but a few clues remain. Anne Hune log loom recovered by, this is where it gets interesting. A local resident, Ken Reed, in two thousand and fifteen. Ken was doing his own deep blaster mining in Scuba Gear in ancient submerged Mexican or Spanish mine works. The flume had washed into an excavation and was twenty to thirty feet below the surface of Clear Creek when discovered by Ken. Bob Boland helped Ken retrieve the very heavily, heavy water log artifact from the creek. The flume is currently on display in the visitor center museum mining room. Square Hole referred to as the Spanish mark by early settlers. Its purpose is unclear. It is only a few feet deep and large enough for a couple of people. Was it a lookout post? Question mark. At least two other similar facing holes exist in this area.
There's one by the, uh, right.
Yes.
There's one down there. I don't know what the other one is. Where's the other one?
The long montage.
Really?
Yes. Well, thanks to Bob for that little bit of this. All right. Well, uh, thank you, Scott. We are going to go into executive session. I, um, I'm going to adjourn our regular session here in a minute. I just want to make sure, does anyone have anything else that feels like to add? Uh, before I adjourn.
We'll need one moment upon adjournment to just switch to the other meeting.
Got it. And just a note to everybody, we don't have our next work session or regular session for eight to eight. So, uh, if there's nothing further, congratulations again to Paul and Ed.
Yeah, thank you. Congrats.
Paul, the jury, the day thirty-eighth. We'll, we'll do the best job we can for you.
Oh, no, I'm going to, no doubt, I'm on.